Okay, Mr. Chairman, we're on the air.
Check the clock on the screen.
It's wrong.
I know it's wrong, it's about three minutes off when I looked at it last.
Yeah, that's above my pay grade to fix. I'll talk to the web person.
Well, we can start now or we can start in three minutes. Let's start now.
Let's start now.
The October 24th meeting of the Long Hill Planning Board is called to order at 7:30. Can we read the announcements, please?
Absolutely. Number one, call to order and statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting and hearing dates on the municipal bulletin board and website by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel newspaper and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, standard board procedures. Any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi-judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. A decorum appropriated to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting or hearing of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting or hearing to a later specified cutoff time. Number four, electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any electronic devices as to not interfere with the proceedings. Number five, pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible)
Cool call. Mayor Lavender is excused this evening. Committeeman Wright?
Present.
Ms. Dill?
Present.
Mr. Hands?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Melonowski?
Here.
Mr. Files excused this evening. Vice Chairman Richardson?
Here.
Chairman Sandow?
Here.
Chairman, we have a court.
Thank you. First item, first I'd like to make an announcement. If it appears as if we're skipping a few steps during the hearing tonight, it's because there are no members of the public in the audience. And so, we'll try to expedite the hearing. The first item on the agenda is a subdivision of Block 12702, Lot 45, which is 162 Basking Ridge Road. Is the applicant present?
We are.
Please, join us at the table.
While they're getting ready, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
The notice content was sufficient. It was timely served and published, October 13th served, published October 14th, both at least 10 days prior to this evening, so the board does have, in my legal opinion, jurisdiction to hear and decide the application this evening.
Counselor, would you like to start off?
Good evening, Mr. Chairmembers of the Board, Board Professionals, Frederick Zelli, Post-Pollock, on behalf of the applicants, Robert and Eva Neese. This is regarding 162 Basking Ridge Road. It's Block 12702, Lot 45, located in your R3 zone. This property hosts a single-family home constructed in the late 1940s, detached garage and in-ground swimming pool. The applicants own the property and are residing in the current home. They wish to subdivide the property into two generally conforming, single-family residential lots. The only nonconformity is the existing rear yard setback of the home, which will not be exacerbated in any way by the proposed subdivision. The newly created building lot would be entirely nonconforming. We do have two witnesses this evening, Rob Neese seated to my right, one of the applicants, and Bill Hallows, our engineer. Typically, I would take Mr. Neese through the photos, but in light of what the chair just indicated, if you'd rather me not do that, I don't have to do that. I'll leave it up to the board.
Move along.
With or without photos? Let's go through them quickly. First, Mr. Neese, would you?
Yeah, let me swear him in and Mr. Hallows, as well as our board professionals. Do all four of you swear to God or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you all.
Just for record, these photographs were taken by myself shortly before the filing of the application. Mr. Neese, if you would just take us through each one, just indicate what the perspective is, and please confirm that these photographs still accurately portray as the property shows now, and if there's any differences, just let us know.
Well, the first photo is direct on from Basking Ridge Road. It shows through the trees the house, and to the right, a garage, a extra garage. There's a garage under the house as well. The only changes, and you see it in the first, second, and third, right if you look at the second picture, there are two falling down fences. They're split rail fences that were rotten. We've taken them out from both sides of the front driveway. And they weren't fences, they were just the, you know, entry level. I guess on three, you see the fence better. Again, the fourth picture is from the front, again, you can see the garage.
Is that primarily showing the area where the new building lot would be?
Yes, it is. So, to the right of the red building would be the three-quarter acre lot. Next one is straight on. The only difference is, we've, there was a work that needed to be done on the stairs, on the front of the house, and the walkway going up to that was just bluestones in the ground, so we replaced that with some cement walk-in, a, well, flagstone on top of it for the steps. It wasn't safe, so we did that. You can see it on the next picture, too, the steps that had to be replaced.
The red detached garage showed in that photograph, and the next one, is still in place and will stay, is that correct?
It is still in place.
For the foreseeable future, it'll stay, is that fair?
Yeah, I think we'll hopefully replace the roof and make it a usable. We have stuff stored in there now, it doesn't leak, but it will stay. This is, the next to the last picture is looking from the lot that would be subdivided back to the house. All those trees remain. We've had an arborist out to check them, and they all seem pretty healthy, except for one by the road, notified Morris County that. Even these dead trees are still there now in the last picture.
And you currently reside in the existing homes, is that correct?
We do. We took possession January 24th of this year, and we've been renovating it, bringing it back to its pretty spectacular, original dwelling. It's been a lot bigger of a job than we expected it to be, and, but yeah, we're living there, and we tend to live there. My wife Eva and I are both going to be retired next year in February, and we have six grandchildren, four of which live nearby, and they love to run all over the property.
And the pool, I would imagine, they like?
They do. They've been taking private lessons in the pool.
The property, the building lot that's being created, would be sold to a builder, homeowner, is that correct?
Our intent is to keep it as long as we can. We just want the option to be able to sell it. We've had a lot of changes going on, and we wanted to get this approval done, so we would have the option, if we needed to sell it in retirement, but that's, we're hoping to be able to stay there with the property as it is.
So, it's not, so I'm wrong, it's not an imminent situation?
It's not an imminent situation.
I have nothing further for Mr. Neese?
I just, I walked by there this afternoon, and that's a nice piece of property to the right.
It is.
It really is a nice spot you have there, so.
Very old trees, too, which are beautiful and...
Do you mind just telling me a little bit about the road to this side? Do not enter private property, that gravel driveway there?
Yeah, that's not our road.
No, no. Do you know who's down there, or?
I don't know who's down there, but there is a house right next to it that has an indoor-outdoor pool, and I think they own most of that property. But there is a house at the end.
Down there.
Liz, do you want to talk about sheds?
Do you want to do it with this witness, or the next?
No, well, I could at least... So, were there sheds at one time, and what's the status of them now?
There were five sheds that were in terrible condition, dangerous condition, had wires running through each of them in order ostensibly to provide electricity, I guess, but going from one shed to another, but there was no electricity in it. And almost on day one, we had those demolished, as well as a hot tub and part of a deck on the back that were roped off with police tape because they were rotten. So, we took all that out the first week we were in. So, there are no sheds now.
Got it. Thank you.
No other questions, I would move on to Mr. Hallows.
No more questions?
Yeah, I do have a question with regards to sheds. Are you planning to replace those sheds, any existing?
No plans to.
They've been erased.
Absolutely, we don't want them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hallows has appeared before you, in case something's up. Many times, I mean qualified many times, Mr. Hallows, is your license as a professional engineer still in good standing this evening?
It is.
He approved again as a professional engineer?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Hallows remains approved?
Sure.
Excepted as an expert engineer.
We know, Mr. Hallows. We're not going to challenge him.
Thank you.
Would you take us through the application?
Well, I think you all know where the property is. It's on the north side of Basking Ridge Road, right at the intersection with East Rayburn Road. It's known as Lot 45, Block 12702. And I will turn it over to, we've rendered page two of the drawings that you have.
Mark that A1 with today's date, please.
Get a modern tool.
I like the scale. A1?
Yes.
This is a, this is a rendering of the existing conditions, which is sheet two of the drawings that you have. It's the same sheet. The only thing we've done is colorized it, just to give you an idea of what kind of pops out with you, to you, when it's in color. You've got the driveway.
Front button.
You've got the driveway that comes off Basking Ridge Road, kind of got a parking area here. You've got a garage under on the house to the left, and the garage doors are on the detached garage to the right. This is this one-story, single-family home. You probably all noticed, I know I drove by this house probably thousands of times, and always wondered what was in this circular room that faces Basking Ridge Road. And to the rear of the driveway, there is a swimming pool, and there's evergreen, arborvital-type shrubbery that, you don't really see that pool from the street. And the variance, the existing nonconforming condition that we have is this side yard setback. It's 20.6, where we need 25 feet, and actually, I need to amend my drawing. In Long Hill Township, you've got two front yards and two side yards. So, that's technically a side yard. Both of your professionals have indicated that.
So, the rear yard setback variance we've called for is actually a side yard?
It's a side yard setback. If it were a rear yard, you would need 50 feet, but this is a side yard, and 25 is required, and we're at 20. And what we've done, just, is just kind of give you an outline of what we're proposing. You've got the green is the outline of the property.
We'll just call that A2 since it's colorized. Which sheet is that on?
It'll be sheet three.
I don't think it's sheet three. It's the last one.
I think it's sheet four. Five, maybe, four? Yeah, four.
Three of three.
Yeah, I think the fourth might be the survey.
No, not on what was published.
It's on our website.
This is 4-4.
Could you go back one chart, please?
You're missing the gradient one.
It appears as if there is something darker shaded, running westward from the house to Rayburn. That isn't really a driveway, is there some reason why it is shaded darker?
No, there is no. I think, are you looking, this is...
Yeah, I'm looking at that.
No, there's nothing, there's no driveway over there. Just the utility lines go out, go out in that direction.
I think that's an issue with the colorization, rather than anything serious.
Those are just measurement lines to the boundary, right?
Correct. They're all set lines to the...
Well, actually, I presume there actually, what was proposed, may be a driveway, because when I looked, it looks as though, you can see there's a gap there, in the, but...
No, actually, there's, there's not necessarily trees there, but there are...
There is a gap there, yeah.
Yeah, there's shrubbery all along this property line.
I reckon it's the old driveway, proposed. Anyway, carry on, it's immaterial.
Just for the record, we are not proposing a driveway to Rayburn.
No, no, we're not.
And there's no curb cut there, correct?
There...
There are no curbs?
Yeah, there's no curbs.
No curb.
So, I guess technically, there's no curb cut.
Okay. We're out of juice here, so.
So much for technology.
So, as I indicated, the property is the green line that goes around the perimeter of the property. We're proposing a new lot line, would be the yellow line, and we're just trying to show you the building envelope with the tan line, that, it's a pretty good-sized building envelope. This lot is fully conforming. It would have 33,296 square feet. The house, existing house lot, would have 58,179 square feet, where 30,000 square feet is required, it's the R3 zone. Again, the only variance we're seeking is this existing nonconforming condition of that side yard setback.
Mr. Hallows, just for the record, to explain why we're showing a 75-foot gap from the street to the building envelope, as opposed to the 50, which is the front garden setback?
Sure. According to the ordinance, it's required to have, this, this road and Long Hill Road is required to have a 75-foot conservation easement across the front. So, that would be, if the board were to approve this subdivision, that would be an deed for each property, the conservation easement. And just so everybody knows, because I know that was a question of the engineer, we propose, if this were to be approved, that it would be filed by deed. We've, you know, subdivision would be perfected by deed, rather than file a map.
So, the variance you're asking for is the piece on the back, that's only 20 feet off the property line versus the 25 setback?
Correct.
Was that not pre-existing?
It is pre-existing.
And it was already, was that not already covered in a previous variance request, or was there a different setback at that time? Or there's no data?
Yeah, I really don't know that, that...
So, there's no history on...
I think the previous owner owned this property for quite a few years.
From '72 or so.
1972 or 72 years?
So, again, my question is, it's pre-existing, you're asking for a variance of a pre-existing, would you not have received already a variance for that? We're assuming it's pre-existing, nonconforming, as opposed to having been granted by variance. We're not aware of a variance when this house was built back in the early 40s. I'm not even sure off the top of my head when zoning ordinance in this town went into effect, it might not have been.
Did you do an open request or any requests to see if there were any approvals?
I honestly don't remember whether we did. I know we don't have any evidence at the moment.
But either way, I take it, if it was pre-existing or previous variance approval, the fact that it's a new lot by virtue of it being a smaller lot, it would still require new variance relief, one way or the other, relevant and material question. But either way, they would require a new variance, correct, Liz?
Yes.
Thank you.
Said a different way, because this is a subdivision, each of the lots has to be separately conforming as of the approval of the subdivision.
Correct.
In any event, the home itself, as far as anyone would know, is lawfully existing, and therefore, would be a C1 as opposed to a C2, even as far as our positive criteria would go.
Is the lot immediately adjacent, occupied?
Yes, there's a house on that property.
Okay.
And that house is fairly close, is enough.
So, your argument is the lot line is where it is, and they couldn't, you couldn't eliminate the existing slash proposed side yard setback deviation without making the neighbor's lot more nonconforming with respect to the setback on that dwelling, and regardless, presumably, it's occupied, so there's not necessarily a requirement to try to buy land from them. Would that be the argument?
Yeah, I think that that lot is probably pretty close to 30,000 square feet. That's an older subdivision.
Mr. Neese, what is directly on the other, on that side of your property line?
Well, there's a fence which we share with that neighbor, and there is a pool that sits slightly to the right and down. The house itself is a good 100, 200 feet away from the side lot. It's toward the left of their driveway. But we share that fence, and they have a pool that's about the same distance where our pool is from the house.
Bill, can you scale the distance from the property line to the house?
This is really just put on there from Google Earth, so I really wouldn't...
That's not accurate.
Yeah. It's really just to show that the properties are occupied.
Would you also be arguing on the C2 grounds that the two new lots are more, are closer to the lot area in the zone, and hence, would be a better zoning and planning alternative to having one oversized lot on which...
Correct.
Potentially significantly larger home could be built?
We're consistent in zoning and lot sizes, that's correct.
Yeah, I'd like to hear a bit more about that, maybe Liz. We're all good with the zoning requirement here in R3 for the second proposed lot, if you wouldn't mind just walking us through.
They are for your purposes now, meaning the lot meets the requirements. When, you know, assuming somebody in the future is, comes in to construct, they'll have to meet the zoning requirements for the zone, and if they don't, if they need any variances, well, you won't see them, but the zoning board will.
So, right now, what it's designed, do you project any need to do that in the future?
They are showing a building envelope, you know, on that.
Yeah, yeah.
That meets, that meets the criteria.
Yeah, so the lot size meets the zoning, and within that purple shape?
Yes, right.
That would meet the setbacks, and the point is, there could be a house in there, and it's suitable size to be a suitable house.
It conforms with the underlying zoning, yeah.
Can you just help me with one quick point, though? Why, in terms of the documentation, it says the proposed setbacks and stuff are not applicable for this new lot?
Right, well, because, because the reason I did it, this is consistent with, if you recall, what we did with the PRC application on Delaware, which is that what is before you right now is just the subdivision of the lots, not the construction of a future home. And so, all of that, I didn't want to put it in the zone table that I included, because in my mind, it was misleading, because it's not, we, there is no home being constructed here at this time, and there's no home for year review, and so, that's why I said it was not, you know, NA, because really, what's before you is the subdivision of the property.
I'm just not sure if that's a...
Well, that's...
I think it would have been more appropriate to put it in, personally.
This is what...
Because then at least you can say this is the minimum?
Yeah, no, that's true. I mean, I could say, yeah, we could have done like, you know, less than or equal to the...
Because it's already put it there in the, in the shape, so it's already indicated that that's expected to be where a house, or whatever.
We don't know.
It can't be outside of it.
And it could be, for all we know, it could be another permitted use in the zone, which is, you know, there are some other permitted principal uses in that zone.
Okay, so it's a deliberate use of NA?
Yes, it is.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
I have nothing further for Mr. Hallows, and no further witnesses.
Are there any other questions from the board? Joe, do you have anything to add?
I do not. Mr. Hallows has covered a couple of minor points regarding the plan.
Use the microphone.
And I set the other one up, too, right? That's embarrassing. Mr. Hallows had already covered, in his testimony, a couple of minor points in my letter for minor revisions in the, in the plans, so, to that extent, everything in my letter, you're willing to comply with?
That's correct.
I'm satisfied.
Mr. Zell, you're stipulating to everything in the Van Cleef memo?
Yes.
Okay, the applicant is on.
Anything from you, Liz?
Just clarification, is the variance 19.6 or 20.6?
19.6.
Okay, okay. And then the other question I had was with regard, on your survey, there, it says pool equipment, sort of along the lot line, and I was just curious what that was.
Yeah, actually, the pool equipment has been moved a little bit closer to the, to the pool. It sits as, if you, I'll go back, back here. There's no shed or anything on the pool equipment, looks like it was refreshed. I think the pool itself was kind of refreshed, I don't think it was, had been used in a while. But the pool equipment has been moved over a little bit closer to the tree, but on that, there's a little retaining wall there, so it fits, and that'll be something I will adjust on my final drawing with, along with the side, new sidewalk that goes out to the driveway.
It's just a filter.
Oh, okay.
That's all.
Okay.
There's no other equipment, there's no shed.
Yes, it's the pump and the filter.
Yeah. One of the sheds was right next to it, and that had half burned down, so we took that out, so.
That's it, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Hallows, just for the record, the change in the sidewalk does not affect purview's coverage or anything like that?
I would think not, because it's actually a little closer to the house, so it's not quite as long a run. But we aren't, we aren't close to the maximum.
Is the pool on the lot line there, the side lot?
No, it complies, the pool complies.
So, it's not asking for a variance?
No.
Any other questions? Considering the fact that we have no members of the public here, we will forego public questioning of Mr. Hallows, and we will forego public comments on this application, and I'll turn it back over to counsel for a summary.
It's indicated, it's with one exception of the now side yard setback, which is a pre-existing, nonconforming condition, as best as we can tell. And in any event, the house itself is a lawful existing structure, so we would satisfy the positive criterion for a C1 variance for that. As Mr. Warner indicated, we could also satisfy the C2, at the virtue of the fact that we are now creating more consistent lot sizes within your zone. So, otherwise, it's a completely conforming application, minor subdivision, that, again, will be perfected by a subdivision deed, as opposed to a filed map. So otherwise, it's a completely conforming application, minor subdivision that again will be perfected by a subdivision deed as opposed to a filed map. There's no negative detriment of any kind that we can tell, so the negative criteria would be satisfied as well. So we would appreciate a positive vote. We thank you for hearing us this evening.
Your turn.
With the chairman's permission explicitly, the, the applicant is seeking a minor site plan approval with one variance side yard setback as described because the lot is a new lot, notwithstanding the fact that it was an existing deviation. And I'm going to, if it's a motion to grant, I'll assume it's with all the stipulated two conditions, which are those set forth in both our planner and engineer's report. And actually, those, I believe, were all the conditions because the deed, the subdivision deeds that were stated as a stipulated two condition are in the, in the report already. And it requires a majority of pass, for passage, as does everything for our planning board. I'm sorry? Oh.
Can we have a motion, please?
A motion to approve this application as so described and
Second?
Hold call, please.
Mr. Hands?
Yes.
Committeeman Ray?
Yes.
Ms. Dill?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Malinowski?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Chairman Sandow?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all very much.
Good luck.
Wonderful evening.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Enjoy retirement. It's a lovely property that says so.
You're very blessed.
The, the past owner was a collector of antique automobiles he used to see on the, on the property.
You should come up.
Had a blue Mustang, right? Oh, yeah. That'll pay.
That's great.
Yeah, yeah. At one time he had a, he had a sixty-three Mercedes sedan, which I really, I thought was incredible.
Thank you.
No, no, he, he did, yeah, yeah. He used to sell them every now and then. He'd see them in the front lawn.
It's always very interesting as well just to hear what people's stories and what they've been doing and
It's written.
Oh, yeah. I had not noticed that, that side travel road until I walked it this afternoon. It's like, do not enter. No, no, I've noticed it. Somebody wants their privacy back there. I was curious if they may be here tonight if they were, as an object, because they said that somebody likes their privacy.
Circulate the resolution we sent over today?
Okay.
Oh, that's nice. Yeah, I always, most towns I do them because one of my best track deals. And I candidly, I shot one around. There's a record of it happening, that's good.
Have a great night.
Right, no, no, but I mean, the letter stays somewhere. It's on file somewhere, so, yeah.
A man who knows what he's doing. That's good stuff. Like this stuff.
I'm gonna hit the hammer to get the chairman back soon. Oh, okay. Wait, should I take a vote?
Good weather or Seattle weather?
Next item on the agenda is meeting minutes for three-minute meetings in September and October, and we're going to pass on that. Board secretary assures me we'll have it for the next meeting.
Yes, Mr. Chair, you want it on the master plan agenda or do you want to wait?
We'll talk about it.
Okay.
Final item on the agenda tonight is an ordinance that the township committee has introduced on first reading. And I'm going to let our engineer talk about it.
Let's keep this quick. Hope you all had an opportunity to see the memo I sent out, a brief two-pager summarizing the two sections of the ordinance. In, in summary, the first section, maintenance and stormwater management systems, is a direct use of the model ordinance from the state. So it's the recommended local ordinance that would be adopted. Our ordinance, I had spoken about this during the Parisi application, our ordinance is a citation reference.
Just to put contact, this is regarding water retention basins and, or storm retention basin?
Yes, all stormwater facilities in municipality, specifically the requirements for private development and privately owned to then be maintained by that responsible party.
And this would be similar to what we've experienced on the Parisi application?
Or any major development that we'll see.
That will be coming down and it's also pre-existing?
Correct, so depending on when the approvals of prior major development applications came through, anything since the two thousand five stormwater rules included a maintenance component, then over time that was further reinforced and essentially the industry caught up with the requirements and the perfection of deeds, having maintenance manuals, obligations from a responsible party became clear and deed required. And then as we moved into the amended stormwater rules in two thousand twenty-one, there were increased requirements because there were new types of facilities being created, heavily planted, that required different maintenance. And then now in two thousand twenty-three, we have the recent update with the inland flood protection rules. Those don't really change the maintenance requirements in any way. What this ordinance does is takes an existing requirement at the state level for a major development stormwater system that would already be properly and required to be deeded with those requirements and puts it in our local code, so there's a stronger reinforcement at the local level. Township engineer could always cite it. I, as your board engineer, can always cite it more stringently. And it's reinforced at the approval, it's reinforced in the deeds with the O and M manual. And then subsequently, part two of this ordinance is the creation of a very simplified permit system to inventory all of these facilities, existing, prior existing, as well as all new, and keep a registry. Essentially, I look at it like a dog license. You register your facility, you're on notice with the municipality, you acknowledge that you have these requirements, not only by the deed but by having that permit. And then it creates an obligation, which you've already had. But now locally, under our specific permit, we can cite the compliance to provide your annual reports. And so your township engineer will send out annual notices that remind those responsible parties of their private ownership requirements for maintenance and then also maintenance logs to then be submitted to the township. Township will receive those in prompt fashion to be able to put them inside of the annual submission to the DEPA.
What this does not state or imply that the township is taking ownership of the maintenance.
No. No, but what it does do is provide a little more explicit language to indicate that we have the ability to come on private property and address any of these issues that are neglected. And that's already, again, part of the major development requirements and the deed restrictions that when we do that, we can, we can levy those costs against the property owner. So this is really just a local reinforcement of existing requirements.
Thank you.
So the, the individual who'd be responsible, right, that could be the homeowner, it could be the developer?
Yes, so
How does that, how does that usually?
So with a single-family home, if the single-family home is a major development by itself and there's no other development going on, they can be identified as the responsible party. That's the only time a single-family home can be the maintenance obliga- have the maintenance obligation solely on them deed restricted. If they're part of a small subdivision, like we saw in the recent application, there has to be some form of an entity. And each of those individual can be prescribed certain activities through agreements or through their HOA, whatever mechanism is created. But they're, they're limited and they're not a responsible party, so the municipality can't impose those, those levies directly on them for those costs. It would be to the responsible party, which would be some form of an association that creates, you know, ideally a reserve to address these things and, and to mitigate those circumstances.
So is this all fairly new?
No, it's been around since two thousand five. It's been part of the stormwater rules, the maintenance requirements and things like that.
This part, that's not what I'm referring to.
Yeah.
Right, it's the, it's, it's the other part of it, right, that where you have HOAs taking care of this and, and
It's always been the
Responsible parties, that kind of thing.
It's always been one of the, the few mechanisms that could go in place. But it's become much more above board that everybody understands that is the only mechanisms. Prior, when everybody was learning the rules and understanding how to navigate this, there was some slippage, I would say, with developers, responsible parties, transition to homeowners in major developments. Also commonly, it was more common before the green infrastructure rules in two thousand twenty-one that a larger subdivision would include deeding of a right-of-way for a public road and stormwater facilities that were specific to the drainage around that roadway. And so ancillary drainage came from the lots and went to that, but that, that stormwater management system was often dedicated to municipality on a dedicated lot and became municipal responsibility. With the change in the two thousand twenty-one rules, the green infrastructure component requires everything to be much more localized. So that meant less large-scale basins, one basin in development, became five basins in the development. And because of that, it necessitated the use of HOAs and other mechanisms to be responsible parties.
But, but there's, I guess what I'm getting at is, are we breaking new ground as far as that type of?
No.
In that the HOAs and like towns have basically been hands-off with this and allowed other parties to take care of it and it's been working? That's, 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 that's really what I'm asking.
It, nothing's going to change in that way. It's still occurring on its own and it's still not occurring on its own. This is more of a mechanism that enables your township engineer, your code enforcement to make sure that there's no detriment to adjacent properties, no detriment to the public and that they can go on and address a matter more directly by citation locally than invoking something that's in an existing deed or anything else. But we're really not changing any, any prescribed responsibilities in any way, shape or form.
Yeah, I mean, just in my experience, you know, it sounds well and good that you're going to protect homeowners on either side of, of issues by enforcement of code. And we, I mean, we haven't been that, we haven't been that good at it. And so that's why, you know, my questions were directed to, not the rules necessarily, but how, how we're going to make sure that all the work that needs to be done is done appropriately. Because there's nothing worse than to be a homeowner, right? And, and I've seen it, I've seen it a couple of times in, in the time I've been in, on the, on the township committee where, who do you turn to? An engineer shows up and, and maybe does this, maybe does that, and before you know it, you know, months have gone by and, and, and you're, you know, your property is, is, is being affected. And that's why with something like this, it seems that there's a little bit more, that the, the state is, is involved here. And, you know, one of the things I'd, I'd ask you is, have towns taken over the responsibility? You know, they can pass on, they can pass on the cost to whoever they want, but have towns been taken over the responsibility of something like this in your experience?
So not taking over ownership and responsibility to maintain. That's been a clear line that amongst our whole industry, the recommendation is to stay consistent with the requirements, that it remain with the responsible party, the private ownership. There are very few municipalities that have, in certain circumstances, gone out and taken ownership of something because an HOA fell apart or some other reason that necessitated it. But this has been something that's been increasing in prioritization of the state and the EPA for water quality. Over, we're in year one of a five-year permit cycle on the MS four permit. And you look back to the last two five-year cycles, so the last decade, this has become more and more of a priority of the permit to make sure that these, these maintenance logs are being maintained. And that's a pass-through to the municipality. So our public works department has a higher burden of maintaining logs and doing inspections and doing repairs over the course of the last couple of permits. And now it's, it's very serious and diligent. Along with that, you also have to identify all the private facilities and solicit those logs. It's very common that the private entities do not provide those logs in a timely fashion or at all. So you self-report on what you know and you indicate that you asked and you didn't receive. This gives us a mechanism to say, there's no reason for you not to do it. You have a permit, you know you have a facility. And please provide your logs in a timely fashion.
Okay.
And if you don't, we'll do inspections and that will levy a, a fee against you for that, any maintenance required.
Okay, so, all right, so not to belabor this, right, but it's, it's ultimately, you're, the, the town, if you're not giving them the reports that they want, it's the towns not turning around to a state entity and saying, look, this guy's not doing what he's supposed to do. It's incumbent upon the town to, to
It is. Under the permit, it's incumbent upon the municipality to go exercise those maintenance requirements and, and be able to report to the state and the EPA that holistically the town has a complete water quality approach.
Okay, and then, I said that was my last point. I've got, I've actually, I've actually one more.
It was part B.
Yeah, exactly. So ultimately, who's left holding the bag here, right? You've, you've got a problem, primary entity, whatever it is. As a, as a town, you've been fining them, you've been, you've been telling them they have to do it, but they're just not doing it, right? And, and there's, there's only, you know, eventually they're like, we can't pay your fines anymore. We're, we're, we're going out of business, we're going bankrupt, whatever. You can, you can't do anything to them. Who eventually is left holding the bag on that, under, under this?
We carry the cost as a municipality and they're levied against the, the property. And then when that property is sold, that's
Also, so as a Lean, so owner of a property, right, I've got, and somebody else is supposed to be
So say you had a commercial lot that was a major subdivision or major development. You had a stormwater basin on it. That entity eventually decides to sell, not do the maintenance and, and they have a lien against them. It'll come out in the sale, it'll come out in the wash of the sale.
But to you, I mean
To the, back to the municipality. Yeah.
Yeah, but if I'm, if I'm, if I'm an owner, right, and under that, that, that ordinance, I'm, I'm diligently weeding, doing everything I'm supposed to do, right? But the other person I'm, I'm, who's responsible for the bulk of the cleanup just isn't doing it. Right? That, that's ultimately going to end up a lien on my property.
If I may, it sounds like, Councilman, you may be talking about an association or similar type entity where there's multiple individuals?
It could be similar as well.
Well, if the single person's taking care of the responsibility, there's no lien because
No, no, but, well, that's not the case, right? There could be, there's, as I read that ordinance, there's, there's responsibilities that the homeowner has to do and it's, it's, it's
Correct.
It's reasonably minimal, but you're depending on somebody else and that could be an association, it could be an individual homeowner, the way I see it. And so
So it can't be an individual homeowner as a responsible party?
Yeah, right, exactly, right, that's, that's what I'm saying.
But so, so the other, say like in a small subdivision,
Would be an entity.
The, we're, I'm going to say six for reasons. The six homeowners all have a dry well and they all have to maintain that dry well, they need to regularly clean it out. It takes their roof leaders. The detention basin on the six-lot subdivision has a responsible party, whether that's an HOA
That's where I think a lot of your challenges are going to come from as we socialize what that means.
Correct.
For someone who's a private owner versus someone who's got a small development of six that may have been built 20 years ago.
Yeah, no, no, I actually, I, I, just to, just to put it in context, right? It's, I'm, I'm more concerned about the, the, the new development, right, where you have a responsible party who goes out of business, just disappears one day, right? And, and, and off they go. And, and that is, it's more that from, from the, from the perspective of, at the end of the day, who's left holding the bag on that, right? It shouldn't be the homeowner, I would think, because you've got your primary, you're, you're doing everything that you need to do, but what happens whenever that person goes out of business? And is the town then left holding the bag, right? Because, and, and then responsible for all of that cleanup. And so I'm wondering, right, and that's probably something we can talk about, we really need to take everybody's time, is, is are there towns under, under this type of scenario where we're a town, we're doing the inspections, we've, we've got DPW and we, we know where they are and we're going in there and we're, we're, we're doing the reports, we are, we are making sure that everything's up to, up to, up to snuff. And we're passing the, we're, we're, we're passing the cost on to whoever it might be, but we're not, we, we, we don't have a mess in our hands at the end of the day. And, and, you know, after going through all kinds of legal mess that would, that would happen with this kid, with this, with this kind of situation.
You're about to get gavelled.
Yeah.
Ours is not to reason why. Ours is only to certify to the township committee that this ordinance is not inconsistent with the master plan. Does anyone have any reason to believe that it is inconsistent?
Wait a second, can I just have a quick comment or two, if you don't mind? Thank you, Dennis. Just curious, does this come about because of our recent application? How did this suddenly happen?
I had recommended during that hearing that.
Correct.
Any Class One members carry the conversation to the committee. I don't know from there how it got to the ordinance, but.
Brendan, is that how it came about, to be looked at now, this ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, I believe there's, you know, there's things happening right now in the township where, you know, we've got to start to, to address a lot of these issues. So that was kind of going on. And then we had the discussion around the Parisi sub-development that kind of, I became more aware of it and it kind of concerned me and some of those concerns are being taken with tonight. But I guess, I think it's more on the township committee level and I'll.
More of a nexus.
I think the aged stormwater management plan maybe had something to do with it, too.
Right, so it's a lot of, it's a nexus of a lot of things all converging.
And that's the most important, I want to make sure everybody understands, it's like a conversation that's been happening and it's come to fruition.
Yeah.
Through this ordinance. I think that's a good thing. That's why I went to.
Increased permit requirements came out in January.
And then the next last question, second question, last question is, are there any other situations like this you have seen that you would further recommend to the township committee to look at sooner than later? Or is this the prime?
In terms of these ordinances?
Yes, stormwater related ordinances.
No, you, you, your ordinances are buttoned up on stormwater. They're immediately compliant with the 2023 inland flood protection rule because of the way they're cited. This is, instead of having that short section, you're expanding one of the sections that's beneficial to clearly leaving the lines between responsible party and municipal requirements.
So this was really the standalone issue and.
At some extent, I'm embarrassed that I didn't come up with it and put it in one of my towns before your township engineer put it in his.
Okay. No, but, but to answer your question, I mean, this is all happening really due to the protecting against climate threats. Is a whole series of renovations to a lot of these particular issues, whether it be the flood hazard rules, the stormwater requirements. And then also part of that, right, Joe, was the connection back to local ordinance.
Yes.
Because there were some big disconnects between what the state was permitting and saying and what the local, you know, all the townships, the 500 and how many?
Sixty-four.
Five hundred and sixty-four towns that we have running around.
Good, thank you. Appreciate it.
All this is very interesting, but once again, I remind you that ours is not to reason why or even care. Ours is only.
We do care, I apologize.
Ours is only to certify to the township committee that this ordinance is not inconsistent with the master plan. And for that, I look to either Don or Liz to give me a 30-second statement on why this is not inconsistent.
Liz, do you want to do that?
Sure, it's, it's not inconsistent with what is currently on the books and what we're proposing with regard to the master plan. Because it is, we have recommendations of the current plan and in the plan that we hope will be adopted regarding, you know, doing best management practices and updating ordinances, et cetera, to be comparable to what the state requirements are.
Thank you. And our resolution is to return to the township committee with a statement that this ordinance is not inconsistent with the master plan. Can I have that motion, please?
Still moved.
Second.
Committee man Ray?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Richardson?
Yes.
Ms. Dill?
Yes.
Mr. Hands?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Malinowski?
Yes.
Chairman Sandow?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Does anyone have any other business they'd like to bring before the board tonight? Mr. Malinowski?
Yes.
Mr. File is absent. This is usually his turn. Can I hear it from you?
Motion to dismiss, to dismiss is good.
Go home.
Go home.
I'm just going to go home.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
All in favor, vote aye. Aye.